Calling this meeting to order on Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 at 6 o'clock. The Planning Commission. We're going to start with our public hearing. Oh, we'll actually start with our roll call by our recording secretary.
Tonight, we're missing Judy Pollan in, but we have Ryan, Sylvester, Terry Gerda-Carter, and Ted Strangoff.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, Public Income is welcome on the modernization of Ludlow's Village Zoning and Flood Hazard Regulations, Part Two. Do we have any public comments on the new sections that we added? Section 255, Section 290, and Section 425? Do we have any public comments on the modified sections? Seeing that there are none, we'll move ahead. Bylaw changes. Do we have any changes we need to make? This is the time that we need to make them before we adjourn the public hearing. Trying to zoom in here, but I'm not quite getting on.
Is this where the sign stuff comes into play?
Yeah, do you want to jump in, Rose? With the sign stuff?
Yes, yeah, so some of the sign regulations, I think, we need to amend. And we added to the packet the statutes for the sign regulations, just to add in there that the indoor sign regulations might need to be tweaked a little. Ryan and I have talked about it a little bit, but some of our regulations do talk about the outside neon LED lights. But I have been noticing that the inside, the windows, there have been neon and also the LED lights that have been flashing and osculating and just completely obnoxious. And I feel that we may need to make a change to that also in our sign ordinance, because I think that's gotten a little out of control. And the other day, I was, Michael and I were driving through town, and I just looked up, you know, and saw even the white lights were just out of control. I mean, they were going, you know, they were flashing, there were LEDs too, they were flashing, they were spinning, you know, it looked like Vegas. So I'm just thinking that with the statutes, I don't, and maybe Jason can answer this, or Chris, will, are they grandfathered to be inside the windows instead of being, I feel like I'm talking back to myself, instead of being just covered by our sign ordinances? Because I want to be able to say they can't, they can't be there now.
And didn't you say that it's already a state statute anyway?
They are, they're in the state statute, and that's why I put them in your packets. So you could see that they were already there. So it's not just our regulations, it's also the state statute regulations. And that's why I want to have those, those white LED lights removed. A lot of the places that have them right now, they don't need to have them, people know they're there.
So do you want me to open up Village zoning and figure out where exactly we need to put that?
Well, it's, I think some of it is already in there, but if we need to, we need to change it to include indoor, indoor instead of just the outdoor.
Can I get permission to share my screen, Patrick? I'm going to open up the Village zoning and find where in, where in the signage we need to change that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just opening up here. Anybody know offhand where signs start? What section is this?
493, on premise signs. Oh, no, yours, like, 540?
540? I'm going to find it, and then I'll show the screen. Is that where it would be prohibited signs?
Sorry.
Okay, prohibited signs. Interferes with, imitates, or resembles any official traffic control, how would you do it? Prevents the driver of the motor vehicle from having clear and unobstructed view of official traffic control signs. It's definitely part of it.
Actually, it's kind of, it's kind of all of them. The state statute covers all of them, but we just want to cover in, in the window, in the window facing out. So we want to, we probably want to add something, and, you know, what we want to add is just a LED flashing, osculating, you know, scrolling, kind of, we kind of want to add, we kind of want to add E, but in the window facing out.
Doesn't D cover it, are internally illuminated?
But we, but we don't, we've always allowed, if you have it in the window, then you're okay, but we need to add that.
Okay, so let's maybe have an, after the G, have an H?
You could pretty much just say all the above also pertains to any lighting in the interior of the establishment.
So up here where it says prohibited?
Or in the windows of the establishment.
Ryan, are you saying up here where it says prohibited?
That might be the best place to put it.
Okay.
So basically, you want to say all these prohibited signs are also, it's also applicable to lighting on the interior of the, of the building. So how's the best way to say that?
Maybe just start at the beginning and add a sentence?
I don't know.
Chris, do you have a?
Chris, can you help us out?
Chris, thank you for being here.
Why don't you take a look at?
I think Chris got froze.
Yeah, he looks frozen.
And this is from the state statute. I gave it to him.
Maybe a paragraph at the end that says prohibited signs?
Prohibited signs, because you say somewhere in here, no sign may be installed. So you might just include interior, windows as, that are, and can maybe make a word, including inside of a window, which are meant to attract attention, or something like that, in the definition, therefore, it would cover it through the definition of what a sign is.
Okay, so up here where it says prohibited signs, right after the, it's just that, that which is, I want to put it before that sentence, because that sentence is where the colon is.
So how about this, no sign may be installed, interior or exterior. So that's exterior of the building. And then just continue the rest of that sentence along.
At the end of that sentence?
So, well, I was just, I was just, so where it says, unless specifically exempted under Section 540.3, no sign may be installed into, on the interior or exterior of the building, or maintained along. So just basically after installed, adding the interior or the exterior.
Okay. What do you think, Ted? For the exterior of the building?
Is that too, Chris, do you think that's too vague?
Well, I think it's all encompassing.
I'm looking at it now, let's see. On the interior, exterior of a building. No, I don't think it's vague if, if it is interpreted that way by the zoning administrator.
Okay. Rose, was there anything else in signs you wanted us to fix during this public hearing time? So it'll go before the village trustees in a month, hopefully?
Can I, can I ask a question, Terry?
Sure, Jason, what's up?
Well, I'm just looking at this again. So in the section above, it says exempt signs, it says indoor window signs that are not internally lit, under G there?
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm just wondering, under 540.4, we're adding interior or exterior of the building at the beginning, if you go down, scroll down the list of other prohibited signs, is it all, is it all like about lighting? Or is there other stuff which might not be fully consistent?
Are you saying we should lose G? Because I think we should.
I don't know, I'm just, I just want to make sure it's internally consistent in the document, you know?
Oh, wait, yeah, indoor that are not internally lit. Okay, so that's, that's okay.
So, but we're not necessarily talking just about signs, though. These are like the rope lights, the Christmas string lights that are on the interior of the windows.
Right, which you talked about last time, too, that we don't want those to be exempt. I mean, we don't want those to be prohibited. Christmas lights.
Oh, we do, those are, those are the worst.
Well.
The LED, the LED Christmas lights are the worst, because they're, they're the ones that are, you know, osculating, and, you know, the ones that are scrolling, and the moving lights, those are the ones that are out of control.
Yeah, so it's not even, it's not even necessarily it's a sign, it's just lighting.
Okay, so let's go to lighting, maybe?
But they're, they're under the, they're under the sign, they're under the sign regulations.
Okay, there's no lighting section. Okay, do you think what we've done is enough, Jason? Where, where are you thinking we have, may have an inconsistency?
Um, so I'm just raising the question, so above, under the exempt sign, again, it says indoor window signs that are not internally lit are exempt. Now, under 540.4, we're saying at the very beginning that it's interior signs, and then there's a big, long list of things, some of which, like, on the next page, might not have anything to do with lighting, and I'm just wondering if that's inconsistent.
Well, lighting is, like I said earlier, in the very beginning of the conversation, E is very much the problem.
Right, but Terry, do you mind scrolling down to the next page?
Nope, I don't mind. To sign standards?
Just whatever, uh, yeah, so like signs with profanity, or off-premise signs, or not stable or securely affixed to the ground, so the way we just wrote it, that applies to maybe window signs too? And is that what we want?
Perhaps, Jason, and I agree with your point there. Terry, if you just scroll back up again to where we were before about the interior lit signs, a little bit higher, I think, yeah, G, indoor signs, right there, G, indoor window signs that are not internally lit, that are otherwise not prohibited, might take care of everything you want.
Yeah, because that whole thing starts with unless specifically exempted. So that's already exempted.
Yeah, so that's already there, yeah. Well, not exempt, no. Indoor window signs that are not internally lit, that are otherwise not prohibited.
That are, okay, that are not otherwise not prohibited, add to that?
Right, to G, and I think that that, do you agree with that, Jason? That kind of covers what we're looking at?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Was there other signage stuff, Rose, you want to just take a look at?
Uh, I think we're good.
Okay, I'm going to jump in with something Martha sent me, which is our definition of accessory dwelling, so I'm going to go to the definitions now at the end.
Wait, Terry? Terry? You go back, I think the not written the wrong spot when you put that in there.
You think I put it in the wrong spot?
I think it should be not otherwise, not otherwise not, and I'm not sure it makes a difference, it just, that's the way, I didn't even get a chance to read.
Okay, so I put that are otherwise not prohibited, and it should say what? That are not otherwise? That are not otherwise prohibited?
Then, in my brain, that's the way it reads in my head. Should be otherwise, not otherwise prohibited, prohibited. The not goes in front of the otherwise.
Not in front of the prohibited, okay, thanks. I'm going to save.
I don't know if that makes a difference, just, it sounds that way. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, that's why we need you. Okay, so I'm going to scroll up to the definitions and look at exempt signs, because we need to put in the A and B part of that, state definition of accessory dwelling, and it's not in there yet. Oh, yeah, accessories, a C, yes. Accessory dwelling. Dwelling unit, so she says we need to include, accessory dwelling unit means a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate to a single family dwelling and has facilities for independent living, including sleeping. Okay, so she said we need to include A, the property has sufficient wastewater capacity. We don't need that stuff up here, then, right?
Well, that's, it's already in there. That's one more.
Oh, it's already there?
It's already there.
Oh, okay, she's saying we didn't have it yet. Maybe she fixed it before she sent it to me. Are we okay with that, adding that? Ryan in, Ted?
Terry, I think what's, I think the difference is state statute changed, and where it says at the beginning, that is located within or pertinent to, that's no longer in there. So you should strike that part.
Okay, now I get what you're saying. Okay, means a distinct unit is where she wants it to start. Okay, so what am I deleting here? All the way up to there, and then putting in?
Just on the second line, Terry, where it, where it starts, it should read a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate to, so if you strike located within or pertinent to a single unit dwelling, that part can go away.
Okay, so I'm saying a unit that is clearly subordinate.
Yep.
To a single unit dwelling. Yeah, that's the part I had to clean up? Is it okay that it still says accordance with 24 VSA? She doesn't have that in her description she sent me.
Terry, I don't know if you heard Jason, but you, you didn't do what he suggested.
Okay, tell me.
You've got it in there twice now. Yeah, just take out the red, the clearly subordinate to that you just put in there, because it's already there. I think what you want to do is delete, well, let, yeah, Jason, and I think he also said to take out the words to a single, single unit dwellings, which just says a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate, is the way it should read. So I'd go back to the word dwelling and take out.
Two A's.
Nope, nope, nope.
No, go back to the word dwelling here.
Go right there, see, that's in there twice.
Oh, yeah, it is in there twice, okay.
And keep going to that is, yeah.
That is?
Keep going.
Clearly subordinate.
Keep going, check out the other is, keep going. You got two is's in a row.
Just a minute, I got two is's.
All right, there you go, good, good. I think that's it, isn't it, Jason?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and we already?
You cut out there for a minute.
Yeah, that, that looks good, Terry.
Okay, we're all good? Okay, and then the other thing was, we hadn't made any changes to the flood section, because that's what we're going to work on next, after we get through our public hearing here and our public hearing with the village trustees, but we do need to take a look at the flood section and redo the whole thing eventually, but today, Rose, I wanted to make sure we added some of the information, I think it's Article Four, some of the information that came out since 2014, when this was done, about fuel tanks and fuel storage, above-ground fuel storage. Rose, do you want that, us to do that today, get in that stuff? And I wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it's so, it's so far off, I mean, we should.
Yeah, the whole thing has to go. Be read.
Yeah, there's a couple of things in your packet, but I, you know, I, maybe Jason can help with that one, because he is, he may know more about it than we do at this point. As you know, John, JBC left us, but we, he just told us, when we asked him about it, he said, well, just follow your regs. Well, the regs are so far off, it didn't make any sense at all. None of the gas companies will follow what our regulations say about the gas, you know, tanks. So, you know, we have to, we, you know, we can't tell people what to do with the gas tanks in the flood zone. They're going to just do what they want to do, and it doesn't follow our regulations. So we went and polled, the first ones I polled originally were the FEMA regs, and, and then I polled the state regs, and I believe later on today, Jared polled some other regulations, and they put them all in your packets, but we're not really sure which ones to follow. We have a couple different floodplain managers right now helping us out, and, but none of them are really, you know, 100% with Ludlow yet. So with Jason being here tonight, maybe he can help and tell us which ones we're supposed to follow, you know, and, or which ones he suggests we put in there for now.
Jason, what do you think? You know, our floodplain stuff here is 2014. What should we get in there before the village trustee's public hearing as a must-have?
So I think, Rose, your, your issue is the, the requirement now that the tank, the fuel tank is raised a foot above, correct?
Right, and the, the gas people will not fill the gas tanks, because they're way too high.
So?
In base flood elevation, they're like, they're like five feet high, you know, so they're like, you know, it's just ridiculous, Jason. So there's something that we have to do to, to fix that.
So, I mean, I guess if it can't wait, I mean, we could spend some time with it and, and deal with it at a future date, or I guess you just strike out the part that says that the tanks need to be elevated one foot above the base flood elevation, and instead of that, you just say they got to be anchored.
Do you know where that is?
Um, I believe it is Section 60.
156.
60. Yeah, and so I agree with that right now, and that's a good fix until we can get it, because that's what they're doing, they're anchoring it, and, and I believe that's the best-case scenario until we can change this regulation.
H right there, Terry, go up a little bit higher.
Yeah.
Interesting, thank God for you.
So, yeah, right there.
Okay, any fuel storage tank has needed to serve as an existing building in the flood hazard zone, a minimum of one foot above the base flood elevation, and we just want to say anchored instead, right?
It, it actually, it already says securely anchored, so I think you could just delete that first clause.
Okay, a minimum of one foot above.
Base flood elevation and, get rid of that, and you're, I think, good.
Okay, what do you think, Rose?
Yeah, no, I totally agree, yeah, as long as we, you know, we have done that.
Okay, I'm going to save that, because my words not there are reliable. Okay, was there anything else we needed to talk about before we adjourn the public hearing? I don't have anything else. No? Ryan, do you think? Ted? Oh, Steve?
Just a question, what's the point of limiting the size of the ADU to 900 square feet?
Limiting the sizes of what?
Of an ADU to 900 square feet, because as I've said before, in the village, it's not a whole lot of land, like, if I drive around and look for a lot of the changes we made, would even fit, like, you could put another house where there used to be a bar in a lot of these houses on Pleasant Street. Look, why would you limit that to, if it was able to fit on a lot, setbacks, wastewater, everything's met, why would you limit, you want to make housing for people, why, obviously, you're not going to get more, a couple people under 900 square foot, okay? What's the point of limiting the size of the ADU?
Is, is any of that in statute, Jason, or is that for the ADU, or is that? I thought that was statute.
I couldn't hear the, the comment from the audience.
Yeah, you just got to turn the mic.
The, the comment was, why limit the size of an ADU to 900 square feet or 30% of the primary residence? Is that statute, or is that?
That, that is, that is in statute. The, the village could go bigger, but they could not go smaller.
Oh, I see, so that's, that's a minimum, so we could go larger.
Yeah, you could say, you know, 1,200 feet, or, you know, whatever, but you couldn't go under 900 square feet.
Okay, there's your answer. All right, I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Do I have, can I just?
But I mean, that is, I thought it was 900, or 30% in statute, is that contradictory to what we're trying to do here?
It's not contradictory to what I'm trying to do here, but.
So you're trying to limit, limit housing possibilities?
No, I don't want to limit housing, but I do, we're just going to end up with more short-term rentals in those barns and sheds. That's all we're going to end up with, and we already have, we're already increasing zoning by a lot, allowing three, four units, so I think we're doing a lot for housing already, and I don't want to do that also. It's going to destroy the village, in my view.
But how so? But how so? I mean, that is actually.
Because it's going to give us housing we don't need, and it's not going to solve the problem that we have.
How is, how is there housing we don't need?
We don't need houses that are $500 a night in Ludlow, we don't need more.
But that's not the necessary use of them. That's, you, we can't, we can't determine a size of a building based on one potential use of the building.
Well, I'm not just talking about my viewpoint, but when I went, when we went to the village shows, you were there, they didn't even want it to go to one-fifth acre zoning in the village, so they're not going to be in favor of that.
That's a completely different, that's a completely different thing now.
Well, I'm not in favor of it. I'm just saying, stating that. I think it would ruin the village.
These buildings are already, most of them are already there, these would just be converted, converted outbuildings at that point.
Right.
So the building's already there, it's just going to be a change of use, ability to use, because I'll, I'll say this, so all you got to do is connect the auxiliary building to the main, the primary, and then it's not an ADU.
There you go.
So why are we?
So you have an avenue already.
I understand that, but why are we going to force people to do that?
Because I'm not in favor of it. I think it will ruin the village. I think it will change the whole climate of the village. I just disagree with you.
Okay, so, does anyone else have an opinion on that?
Jared?
Jared Jody, 156 Main Street. It's my understanding, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's 30% the size of the main unit or 900 square feet, whichever is greater. So if you have a 1,500 square foot house, 30% of that's not going to be even worth, you know, one-car garage, but you're allowed to go up to 900 square feet with a smaller house. The minute you hit, what, 4,000 square feet, 4,500 square feet, it's above 900 square feet, and you can make it 30% the size of the house. So this is more of a, we're allowing smaller units to have larger ADUs up to a certain point. Then it becomes 30% the size of the main dwelling.
Thanks for that clarification.
So I guess I'll ask this, and maybe this is a question for Rose too, could you flip the primary structure? So, right, so if you have a large, you have a 3,000.
No, you cannot.
You can't? Where does it, where does it, where does it say that?
Flip the primary. You always have to have a primary structure.
Because then maybe you wind up with something that's greater than 30% of the main dwelling unit, if you could switch, flip it.
Right, so.
But then that's not conforming, that's against regulations.
It is?
Right, because the, our regulations state 30% the size in the main dwelling unit or 900 square feet, whichever is greater.
Okay, so what if I say that the new, the ADU is now my primary? I can't say that?
Rose is saying, no.
If the new secondary is greater than 30% of that.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know every, like, I asked Jason to correct me if I'm wrong.
So if I have a 1,000 square foot house.
Rose says, "No, you can't flip it."
And I, and I have a 3,000 square foot barn. I can't turn the barn into the primary and the house.
Which you have, right? You have a huge garage.
Sure, I'll use, again, it's still, it's, but it's just, it's something that
They said that would have to be under review for sewer, water, septic, whatever, density, all that stuff.
Besides that, Rose is saying you cannot do that. Jason, do you want to weigh in on this? Can a primary structure be flipped with the ADU?
Or Chris, I mean.
Well, Chris can certainly chime in too. I mean, you know, what comes first, the accessory structure or the primary structure? So technically, you would think that the primary structure is built first, and then they build a garage, and then they build an ADU. But the question is, you know, can you buy a small little house and then build a bigger house right next to it? Sort of going backwards. I don't know. I'm not sure they answered that question. Chris, what do you think?
I think you can. I think you can, as long as it's on the same lot. You know, the initial purpose for this was kind of, they called it an in-law apartment. And now they've expanded it just to like another dwelling unit, as there's a need, a perceived need or a crisis that we need more housing. And so they've expanded the definition of an ADU, so I think that that would work if you went and made the bigger primary use and then turned the other one into the ADU.
But when, but the ADU, if it's smaller, is not a primary?
It, it, that's right, would be the, well, you could just walk, which one's which? You know, people used to do that all the time. They would start with a small house and build a big one, and then they rent out the small one. I think a clever attorney could make that argument and succeed.
My personal.
No, I'm just using you as, I'm using you as an example.
I understand, but there's a huge housing crisis in, we're saying now that if you have the, you have this ability.
It's not a huge housing crisis, it's a huge affordable housing crisis. Even middle-class affordable housing crisis in our town specifically.
Sure, okay.
Not every town, but most towns, I agree. George? Thanks, and see you.
George Tucker, 551 Town Farm Road. I think the case that you're talking about in today's world is a pretty rare occurrence. That swap, you'd have to build such a large building that you have an existing building that potentially is large enough, but would still follow the same ADU requirements.
Yeah.
So like, in theory, if you had a 3,000-foot structure and a 1,000-foot structure, yes, that would, in theory, work, and I don't see any problem why that wouldn't be possible. I just don't think, in theory, that you're going to see people be like, "I've got a 2,500-foot house, and I'm now going to build a 7,500-foot."
Sure, so, well, so I'll ask you this, so tiny houses, tiny houses are going up everywhere. Right? So you put a tiny house on a lot, 700 square feet?
Yeah, I think that that's, that ties into the small zoning and, like, do you deem a tiny house like a unit? Like, if you, if you have five tiny homes on a unit, like, or, the zoo zoning is four units per whatever the new size is, so you could put four tiny homes on a postage stamp? Well, if that's how they're viewed, then yes. But like, is that, and then almost that's controlled by the state.
And the new zoning is five.
Five units, so, yeah.
That we just got.
So me personally, I'm fine with the 30% 900 because there's a number of avenues to work around that, which I'm happy for. But again, it's still, it's contradictory to, I think, what we were trying to do here as a board, which is to encourage housing and to encourage more of it. So Steve posed a question.
Right, right, yeah, it's, this is where you, where you voice your ideas and opinions and we come to consensus.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. I don't think anyone knows what the answer is. And based off of the knee-jerk reaction of the state to basically throw all zoning in character of the neighborhood out is, is pretty, pretty far one way. To give a blanket statement to apply to every town. Do we need more housing? Sure, that's definitely. But to say, "Hey, it doesn't matter that this has been a single-family home neighborhood for 100 years, now you can build fiveplexes." You know, is, I think, what I've heard the consensus is, is like, you could have someone buy an entire block, we don't have blocks, but you could buy an entire street, tear everything down, go brand-new fiveplexes, each with five apartment houses.
Yeah, you could, yep. Okay, do we have any other pressing issues before our public hearing is adjourned? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public, do I need a motion, Rose, to adjourn the public hearing? Or can I just adjourn it?
Yeah, I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, the public hearing is adjourned. And now I'd like to call, open up the, our regular meeting. It's actually called the special meeting because it's not at our regular time. Call to order, real call by recording secretary, hasn't changed much. Okay, opening statement by chair, basically, everybody here has heard my opening statement, it's just, you know, showing respect, be organized by the chair, please. But anybody on the commission may, or Abby may speak at any time, and encourage them to ask questions and speak. Are there any considerations of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda?
Chair, could you, could you take the vials down?
Oh, yes, sorry. We don't need them for anything else, right? No, we don't. Okay, sorry about that.
Yes, please.
I'm going to save, double-save them just in case. Jason, I'll send this along to Martha and you. Okay. Approval of minutes from January 23, 2024. Does anybody have any issues with the minutes?
I did not.
I just had two little things on Section 5 on J. Actually, the way, it's not your fault, Abby, it's, I couldn't pronounce it right, and I looked it up. It wasn't to repair, but it was repairing buffers I was talking about.
Okay.
But, yeah, I made a mess of that, so. So it's the repairing buffers I was talking about in that. And the other thing is, at the very end, you said the next meeting would be February 20th, and I just want to clarify that to February 22nd. Because early in the minutes, we had changed it to February 22nd, just so we had time to learn. Thanks, Abby. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes with those. Oh, Jared?
Jared Jody, 156 Main Street. I would like to suggest the use of last names in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended from January 23rd?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Got to do that part of the adjournment. Okay, comments for citizens? Being that there are none, welcome to our citizens, by the way. Add to our regular planning, meeting norms. Did anybody think about that? Judy sent me some, even though she couldn't be here. I know in the teaching world that she and I are from, you always start off the new year with, with meeting norms. Just, I think I deleted her. Okay, so basically I had her norms, though. Check them for my trash. They basically was start on time, end on time.
Okay.
But she said that we may have, want to adjust, what do you guys think about that one, start on time, end on time?
Well, I mean, we always start on time.
We don't end on time. She said we may adjust the ending time, just from 7:30, but.
Sure, I kind of think the meeting ends when it ends reasonably, you know, I guess, I, you know, if we're if we're kind of really wading through stuff, it's be kind of foolish to say, "Oh, 7 o'clock, time to call it," you know?
Need to get business done.
Yeah, I agree. I, so can we just say start on time?
Been crazy in the past, but.
Yeah.
Needed to get business done then too, so.
Yeah, and we had, you know, a big rush at the end there. So, can we say start on time? Instead of just start on time and end on time?
Start on time, that's fine.
Okay, and then the other thing she had was, just gotta find her email, but the other thing she had was, show respect to each other, and I think we do that now, but she wanted that as our norms, show respect to each other and to the public and the citizens. The other one was, what is it? Sorry, I'm a horrible email deliter, but I'll find it.
So while you're, while you're looking, I.
I got it, actually, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, finish up your deal.
Did everyone review the materials before the meeting? What do you guys think of that one?
So I'd love to, but I get three or four different copies of the materials prior to the meeting. So, something, there needs to be more cohesion, and I think a better working relationship between the planning office and this board on preparing those documents. I'm not sure exactly how that's done, I'm not really in the, in the part of preparing the documents for the meeting, but there seems to just be a lack of communication or something. I'm really not sure what it is, but it's really disjointed, and it makes for some meetings that are, that we probably could end on time if it wasn't for the disjointment. You know, that kind of goes into a couple of other things, you know, one thing, kind of, it didn't bother me, but I just don't see that it's there's, I understand while we're going through the grant, there are a lot of reasons for the, for Terry, the chair, to meet with Martha, meet with the lawyer, stuff like that, outside of these meetings. But I, in some cases, didn't feel that I was, that the board was getting the full context of those meetings outside of here. So especially with Chris Callahan, you know, with the last one, where you met with Chris for a couple hours, and then we got a boiled-down, rough summary. That, that meeting should have been with the board, the whole board, and not just the one, not a one-on-one, in my opinion. Because again, I think it just, it's a disjointment, there's, there is, you know, and I'm not pointed, but there's even times where I think he said, "I want to hear it from him." You know what I mean? So I understand, like, timings and stuff, but.
Thing we noted, I think part of the reason for the review of the materials is we had to find a time where Martha and Rose and I could all meet, and that would be closer to our, our meeting, and then the materials wouldn't get out, quick enough, but I understand that, and I agree with you. And I think that's why we ended up inviting Chris to the meeting, so you heard it directly from him. So, next time, make sure we do that, we get it, you know, get that Chris Callahan stuff done way ahead of time.
Way ahead of time, or just try to, to try to avoid as much as possible having the one-on-ones outside of, in front of the whole board.
Yeah.
Because all those meetings are for the whole board, and we may, you know, we're not, we're not getting the information firsthand. We're getting it second-hand at that point, and that just, it's, I think that goes into end on time. You know, so that's something like that.
Well, I appreciate one less meeting a month anyway.
No, for sure, you know.
We have those meetings here instead.
So, and having, and just having more cohesion with the preparation prior to the meeting, you know, there, I, you know, and getting more and getting more direction. I know this isn't necessarily our responsibility, but I think as this board, I don't think in any way we're autonomous. I don't think we should be setting completely our entire agenda, this is, we need more direction from planning and zoning, like, what do you need? What, what issues? You work with these documents, with these circumstances, day in, day out. Where are your speed bumps? Where are your issues? What holds you up? What ties up progress?
Yeah, I think the DRB is important to me with them also. I didn't invite, I invited all the selectmen and all the trustees, and George did come.
Yep.
You know, to help us with our goals, to see, you know, what they wanted us to do and work on, because I was actually wrong about the municipal planning grant, the one I sent out to you that I got from Martha is not anything that we are going to be working on. So what we work on is what we decide to work on and what they encourage us to work on, the planning board, the DRB, the planning office, the DRB, and the selectmen and the trustees, because that municipal planning grant is all about doing a housing study, which is out of our hands, and we're not even involved in it. I mean, we'll obviously look at the results, and it will guide what we do, but. Okay, so that review of materials before meeting, that should include outside.
Yeah, more guidance. We need more guidance from the select board, the trustees.
But I also heard you say that the regional meetings should be you should be, this board should be meeting with the regional if they want us to work on something, so we all understand what we're going to be working on.
As, as much as possible. I understand that's not possible at all times, but as much as possible.
Okay, another thing she had was, once a decision is made by the board, support it. How do people feel about that one?
Well, I mean.
We have backtracked on some things, but sometimes we've done that because it was a good reason, and we needed to look at it again. Disagree respectfully, we already talked about that, and try to attend in person whenever possible, was the last thing she had. We don't have a doctrine norms, I'm just telling you what she shared. So which ones are we agreeing on? Start on time, respect each other, and the citizens?
So, so I guess, are these, are these going into our rules of procedure?
No, they're just things we're agreeing to do.
Sure.
Yeah, it's very educational thing. Every team I've ever been on, you establish norms before you meet.
Yep, no, and I understand that, you know, and I'll, I'll say that I think I've done that, where I've disagreed, I've disagreed, and then have come along and said, "Hey, this is the direction of the board, I'm not going to continue to."
Oh, yeah, I definitely think you've done that. You just did that tonight.
Sure, but we, but if we're not up here disagreeing, then what are we doing?
Of course, yeah. And if we all have the same opinion, how boring is that, you know? Okay, so what about respect each other and others, we all agree on that? Review materials before meeting is, does that something you're good with?
Yeah.
Okay, and Ryan, I want to put into words what you said.
About limiting meetings outside with contractors or?
Limit outside meetings with contractors.
Or consultants.
Make them part of the regular meeting. Are you okay with that one, Tyler? Is everybody okay with that one?
I'm good.
Okay, limit outside meetings with contractors or consultants.
Things in my mind.
Yeah, I know, they kind of, don't really, you always think you have to say them, but. Okay. Try to attend in person, whenever possible. You guys are always here in person, so is that one okay?
Sure, I think, I think the state's putting forth legislation that all meetings have to be hybrid, right?
Yeah, we just, I just got stuff like that from Jason.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing, survey results. I could pull up our survey. What time is it? It's only not even seven o'clock yet, we're doing great.
So I guess we can look at them, but what are our, what are we, what are we thinking about doing?
Well, this is something Andy wanted us to do. I thought maybe we could just take a look at the survey, and we could just come to some general conclusions about it that could guide us in what we do. Like by looking at just this survey was just about the village.
I think one thing on on this topic is that, you know, after March, we should share these surveys result, survey results with the new boards again, you know, to kind of just give them a sense of the pulse of the community regarding those questions.
I agree, and I have actually done that. I think you've seen me do that.
Sure, yeah.
At the short-term rental meetings, the two forums they had, I shared our survey results pertaining to short-term rentals. Okay, so I thought maybe we just come up with some statements about what we learned from our survey. So we had two hundred ninety-seven responses. Fifty percent were second homeowners, wow. And homeowners, eighty-two percent, and fifty percent of those were second homeowners. That's interesting how it came out with all the second homeowners. Sixty-five percent full-time residents.
Well, you talk about who has a stake in the community. They have a very large stake in the community.
And we did send them to every single, well, not actually homeowner, but every single voter in the village. Okay, there's enough parking in Ludlow. Oh, can I share my screen again? Yeah, I can, right? Here we go. Okay, here's the first one in the results. There's enough parking in Ludlow.
Yep.
And we already know it's the wintertime where people can't find parking. So one hundred percent said, when is there not enough parking in the winter? Every other season looks like most people think there's enough parking. So statement we could have about that is parking is a problem in the winter?
Of course.
Been a problem for a hundred years.
In the winter.
It's the same every, it's the same every year.
I know.
We would be wasting our time sitting here talking about parking.
I just wish that, you know, the state understood our parking problems when they're telling us we can have a lot less parking.
Did you guys know that we did a an actual survey of public, number of public parking spaces the town has in the village? Jason did that. And we have one hundred and fifty-two parking spaces in the village.
And those are all public and not that we owned?
For the public, yeah.
For the public, so they could.
And that includes, that includes the least, the least parking spaces.
And the luxury store?
Some of them are are private, and we all use them.
Yeah.
No, it's not, that does not include the private, but I mean.
Yeah, so that doesn't even include that.
No, that's just, yeah. The private ones, you know, the ones that, you know, people like us sneak into, that doesn't count, but the, you know, it's interesting now that, you know, you think about the potbelly and being for sale. He owns so much parking in the back there. It makes me wonder if people sneak back there and park.
Of course.
Who would tell them?
So one question I do have about this, and I kind of wish Jason was still here, but what structures are able to be built in the flood hazard? So my example, Brookhaven is on Piers, Rose. How high up on Piers, how high up on Piers can you go? Right, can you go twelve feet?
Well, I mean, in a flood, in a flood plain, you can build, you can build up. In a floodway, you know, you can't build. That's that's just the way it goes. So there's buildings in the floodway you can rebuild, but you can't build in a floodway.
No, I I understand that, so, but elevating structures to put parking underneath, I just think we need more conversation on that, more more looking at where they could potentially go, and what size they could be, and if they would alleviate, or if they make sense. You know, putting a putting a barricade around shaws, putting barricades around buildings.
Creates flood everywhere, everywhere else.
You know, so I, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying the solution is, you know, demo shaws and put it on twelve-foot stilts with parking underneath and escalators and elevators up to the shopping center. They've I've seen it elsewhere, I'm not saying that's the answer, but that would be great. But is it, would that be possible?
I hear they know.
I don't think, I don't know, but I don't think so. They have enough parking there.
Okay, let's get back, get back to our survey here.
Well, it's the whole point of it, right?
Of parking, yeah. I know, you're trying to problem solve, which is great, but right now, we're just kind of looking at the results. Do you think the Village of Ludlow needs additional park, public parking? Fifty percent, yes.
I think a lot of these questions, we knew the answers before we got the results, no?
Yeah, but we still had to ask.
The other thing is, Terry, I I found it interesting that you said fifty percent of the people were out-of-staters that answered the questions.
Well, no, I don't think I'm reading that chart wrong. Let's look at that chart again.
But you know what? I mean, think about it, they all own the homes here. And the more and more people that come into my office and fill out the zoning permits that live here full-time are from out of state, but they're moving here full-time. And they're coming here more and more, and they're saying, yeah, we're retiring here, or or they're younger people, and they're like, oh, yeah, we love it here, we're coming here full-time, especially since COVID.
Yeah, because more people can work from home.
Yeah, and they they just love it here, though, and they don't. Yeah, I mean, and what's not.
Library, the people that, you know, they're the people that are involved in town.
Yeah.
Okay, so we all know we need parking in the winter. Fifty percent of the people would like to have more public parking. Actually, the survey speaks for itself. I don't think we have to make notes on it. We just have to figure out ways to share it, I guess. Like Ryan said, we got to go to all the boards and share what we found out. Well, obviously, the village, anything that's affected by the village people, the village people.
Yeah, this is the fourth parking garage right there.
Yeah, first new 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 municipal parking lot is their number one that they would support. Now, that's something important to share with the selectmen, too. Do you use a remote lot? Would you use remote lot of public transportation where for a fee? Wow, a lot of people would use it for a fee. Oh, no, they wouldn't. They wouldn't use it for a fee. A lot of people would not use a remote lot, Ryan.
Not at a, at no cost or a cost, big no's.
They don't want to be shuttled.
Boy, they're fricking.
Okay, how many people in your household? Most of them are two. There's our retired folks. Are there enough housing options for everyone who wants to live in the village? Seventy-seven percent, no. What, what are the following housing types do you think there should be more of? Two, three-bedroom apartments? Seventy-one, about seventy-two percent. Multi-unit apartment buildings, forty to about forty-five percent? Do you think the Village of Ludlow should revise its zoning regulations to require new commercial developments to provide safe parking infrastructure for bicycles and bikes? So that one got more votes than all the others. Allow smaller lots for residential buildings? Forgot we asked these questions about construction. So we didn't have a lot of people thinking we should have apartment buildings, more apartment buildings. That looks about half and half. Do you guys want to keep looking at this survey? What do you think?
Sure, I mean.
Yep.
No, just, just, like I said, I think we we have the general gist of it.
I tried to share it with the public whenever, at those public meetings, whenever it applied to what they were talking about. How interested would you say the Village of Ludlow is in expanding the number of housing uses? Steve?
Me no offense, but this, but the survey of people who haven't been at all these meetings, who don't know the inner workings of town, is a kid who hired a six-year president who said there was going to be free comfortable in the home.
Did you accomplish those tests?
I did, it's all great on paper, but unless you've been here, like, yes, there should be more housing. Where are you going to put an apartment building? Where are you going to put a parking garage? It's a great idea on paper, but I don't think that the survey should weigh as hard as the people you three, of course, Eric, everyone that's been involved. Their, the comments are great, if we, if everything is perfect, but it's not. We don't necessarily have the place. So, yes, they're great ideas, and I think everyone here knows the answer to all these questions before that survey went out. So it's great to get the public's opinion, but it does weigh the same to me as someone who walked in here five minutes, one meeting, says, who can afford housing?
It kind of does weigh the same to me, because these are the people that that answered their survey that maybe can't get to the meeting. Maybe they're home with kids, you know, maybe they're home with grandkids. There's, you know, we're, we're here to represent the people, and the survey was to see, it was part of our grant to see what people's opinions are that are not here. So we have a general idea of what the majority of the people in the village are interested in guiding us in this way.
Now, and the survey can be used, if you do, if there is an idea that comes up, and the survey validates the idea, then it's useful.
Especially when you have like eighty percent of the people.
If you do have a good idea, and the survey doesn't validate the idea, then, oh, we're not going to bring up the survey, right? It's a, but that's again, so it's a tool that needs to be used. I think I think it's, I think it's some data that is that is beneficial. You know, surveys in their entirety are are not fact. They're, you know, their opinion, you know, base, so.
Well, they're a little bit, I think, I mean.
We need to find, you know, if if new ideas come up, new ideas come up, and they're they're feasible, and there's something that could be beneficial, and the survey backs it up, that I think that's great.
How interested would you say the Village of Ludlow isn't expanding the number of housing units for affordable housing? So thirty-five percent, but then seventy percent want, almost seventy percent want incentives for building affordable housing, which the state has offered us. But we could have our own incentives also. I mean, I'm sure we're going to talk about that when we talk about affordable housing.
So, yeah, look at this. Should Ludlow establish a registry for short-term rentals? Yes, but we wouldn't know.
Sixty percent, only twenty percent, no. I did share that at the short-term rental, the two hearings they had with the select board and the trustees. And of the people that said yes, eighty percent, over eighty percent thinks there should be an annual fee. And they think the money should be spent on housing overwhelmingly, seventy-seven people.
And, you know, and I understand that, but people that say that, so how does that, how's that work? We take money from the general front of the town, and the town becomes a landlord and starts building housing? That's that's not feasible. It's never going to happen.
You know what is feasible, though, is the town could have its own incentives, and that Jason, I wish he was still here, because the last regional meeting I went to, not the meeting with Martha, with her and I and Rose, but the meeting that has everybody from the area, a representative from all the area towns that I go to once a month, they haven't, they just hired a new person, and that person's entire job is to help towns establish websites and ways of giving incentives for affordable housing within their their town. They hired her for that specific reason.
I understand that. I mean, one, so one way I could see is that, okay, if we take that money and we have developers come in, we use that money to support those developers in building their product, their.
Even, I think, I think from what I understand, what she was going to do was, you know, the website would direct it to like the Wyndham Windsor County Housing, which is what controls Ruby, Ruby Lane over there.
Yep.
And it would, you know, direct those funds for that kind of housing, to build that kind of housing directly. So I think that's great, they hired somebody like that. Should Ludlow establish registry for long-term rentals? Not so much excited about that. Forty percent, no. If yes, should they have a fee? Fifty percent of people that said yes, said yes, they should have a fee.
No registries.
No registry, and also, you can't do it anymore. The state has said that. Pedestrian and infrastructural improvements, twenty-three, eight percent want sidewalk improvements. Oh, and they said where they, where they, they would like to have them, too.
Yeah, I'd like to stop dodging people on Pleasant Street Extension on that corner.
Oh, my God, and they're supposed to go like twenty-five there, right?
Yeah, you know, you cross, they're walking four wide down the street, and you get cars parked on either side. It makes for an interesting ride.
Okay, so I wonder, in the survey, it tells us where people want them to be. It says that they responded that way, but hope somewhere in here it tells us where they wanted them. Should Ludlow reserve some on-street parking for use by drivers who have a disability? Sixty-five percent, yes. The Village of Ludlow should provide bike racks. Almost sixty percent, yes. End of presentation, so somewhere else it must tell where people want more sidewalks. Okay, that's the end of the survey. Does anybody have anything they want to say, or actually want to take on that? No, I like Ryan's idea of sharing that whenever it's appropriate at other meetings. All right, next thing, setting goals for the year. Obviously, flood regulations is going to be something we're going to work on, and municipal planning grant, we can scratch that because that's not what we're working under right now. Logan told me he might be the person working with us, that Martha might not be anymore, and Logan might be working with us.
Oh.
Okay, rules of procedure, I got to bring this up. Steve, I don't know if you heard my spiel at the select board meeting about our rules of procedure. I sent our new language that we wrote into our rules of procedure to the legal, the Ramon legal cities and towns, because they're a free legal system that we can ask them questions to say, you know, to see, is this language correct? And they said you can't have an alternate on your board unless your board does developmental review. I know, I know, but I was just trying to get our language, you know, okayed by them, and they said, no, you can't have an alternate.
And just because of talking about it, they also said you could have the even number of on-board and across the state. There's tons of boards with eight people, four people, six people, so.
Oh, they didn't tell me that. They said that select board can have, put as many members as they want on the board. It's up to them.
You just put, take the alternate away and then.
So I finally, finally got our rules of procedures all, all signed, all of us signed it, ready to go, going to have it okay by the select board, and they say you can't have that section about the alternate. So Rose's idea was just to wait till the reorganization of boards in April?
Yep.
And just do it over then, or then have you guys sign this again?
I agree with that.
Okay, other business, board member comments?
I have none.
Citizen comments? Come on, Mr. Alden, where is it?
No, no thanks.
No?
I'll be a part of my last sentence, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
You guys are busy today, huh? All this motion stuff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?